Welcome to this debate. My name is Sam Pollock, I'm the editor of the Daily Star. I have to tell you that tomorrow, I'm going to be on a panel for the League of Women Voters, questioning two gentlemen who want to be members of Congress. And I have to tell you that I am so much more charged up about being here tonight than I am about tomorrow night. Because those two charac-- one of those two characters is going to go to Washington and will never be heard from again. These gentlemen are your neighbors, these people will be here interacting with you over the course of their term. I think all of them should be congratulated. I'd like, I'm going to ask you, first of all, to turn off your cellphones, if you haven't already. And I'm going to ask you to withhold applause, cheering, booing, any other sounds that you might make until the end of the debate, because we want to get to as many of these questions as we can, they're really good questions. And the library's kicking us out at 8:30. Okay? So first, before we even begin, let's have a round of applause for all of our candidates. From my left to right, left to far, left rather, I'd like to introduce our candidates: Tobias Whitaker, who is running on the Democratic and Sydney First Independent Line; Jean Pickford, on the Authenticity Line; John Schaefer, Republican; Gregory McCann, Republican; and Bill Heath, Democratic and Sydney First Independent Line. The format for tonight is going to be, two minutes for opening and closing statements, 90 seconds to answer each question, and then a 60-second rebuttal if necessary, if anyone wants to rebut something that one of the other candidates said. And we are going to begin with opening statements. Tobias Whitaker.
I'd like to start off by thanking WCDO and Mr. Pollock, the other candidates, and of course, all of you folks for attending tonight and helping out with this event. There are a lot of familiar faces in the crowd, but for those of you who don't happen to know me, my name is Tobias Whitaker. I grew up in Sydney, actually one block from the library, went to the Sydney School District. After I graduated from Sydney, like a lot of youth in the area, I decided that I needed to go someplace bigger and better. And so I traveled around the country for quite some time, until I finally realized that Sydney really was my home. And so when I came back to the area, my goal was to get involved in the community and hopefully have a positive impact so that other people that were coming up through the school system would want to end up staying in the area. I eventually ended up working at the Boys and Girls Club for seven years. We had five to eight hundred members, depending on the specific year, and that gave me a foot in to the community, as far as the parents, the children, and also the collaborations that we had with other organizations within the community. After that, I ended up working at the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council of Delaware County for a couple of years, working in 12 different school districts as well, among other things. And about that same time, I also began working with Cornell Cooperative Extension. I was on the Human Ecology Committee for three years as a Sydney representative, and eventually became part of their Board of Directors for Delaware County. And I bring that up because I feel there were some relevant issues during the job experience that would help on Town Board. The first one was fiscal responsibility. Cornell Cooperative Extension has a budget of seven figures. Treetown Boys and Girls Club, that's a shoestring budget, and I learned a lot on both ends of the spectrum there. The other thing is conflict resolution. If any of you have ever been to a Town Board meeting, you know how important that is. And the other thing, probably most importantly, is empathy for the person that walks in through the door. Regardless of your political party, Republican, Democrat, any of the independent parties, you all have a voice with me. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Greg Pickford. I'm sorry, Eugene Pickford.
It's okay, I've been called worse in my life, and hopefully I've been better. I'm one of those dangerous combinations of people that has gray hair and yet attempts to use techie equipment. A week ago, I was at my daughter's wedding, and I had the responsibility of offering a prayer, which I'd written out ahead of time. Unfortunately, halfway through the prayer, I hit the wrong button, and I was hoping the Almighty would be patient with me while I regained myself. So I, to help me along with that, I do have some thoughts I'd like to share with you. I've tried to, first of all, let me share with you a bit about myself. I've been a resident of Sydney for the last 12 years, the township, that is. I've been a property owner for 40 years. My wife is a third-generation Sydney townshipite, or whatever the appropriate terminology would be. Her grandparents lived here, her parents lived here, and we live in the same house that both her grandparents and her parents lived in. So we are, we do know something about the area. I've tried to summarize my thoughts about the township in an acrostic, perhaps you've seen something of it called "Upwards." And for me, the primary focus of what needs to happen is a revisitation of the Comprehensive Master Plan that Sydney had in the year 2002. That's a 99-page document. If you take the time to read that, you will essentially find, referenced in it, virtually every issue that either the hamlet, or the village, or the town has had to grapple with over the last several years. The reason why I think it's so important is that unless you have a comprehensive context on which to make decisions, you tend to make those decisions in an isolated vacuum, rather than considering the whole thing. Now, many of you here enjoy all of the dimensions that the Sydney Township has to offer. Many of you are employed in the village, you live in the township, and you enjoy the countryside, perhaps hunting, fishing, farming, whatever. So all of those dimensions are important. Thank you.
Next up, John Schaefer.
Hi, my name is John Schaefer, and most of you know me from having a business here in town. I grew up in Sydney, went to school in Sydney, graduated from Sydney. After that, I joined the, well, I went to college up in Potsdam for a while, then I joined the US Army and served in the military police for three years. Following that, I returned to the area, largely working in pizzerias and for the Delaware County and on Segal County ARC, which was quite a rewarding experience, and really got to work with a special group of people. I helped open the house over here on Union Street many years ago, of course, in the credit union. Following that, I largely, I must have done that for a good 10 years or more. I started working with my parents in a family business. Many of you remember the Montgomery Ward Catalog Store, JCPenney. And then we evolved into a tire store, which I currently run and operate, and have for probably the last 20 years now. I've served on the Town Board twice, at two different times. One time was quite a time with the hospital. I was a bit of a whistleblower about what was happening when I got on the board. You can see the writing on the wall that there was trouble at the hospital. And I very much enjoyed working at that time, and was one of the few to speak up and say we had a problem here, and it needed to be solved. Thankfully, we now have Bassett Healthcare in the area, and it's turned out rather well for the town of Sydney. I would appreciate your support, and having me get on the Town Board. I can't say I have an agenda, I don't have issues that, I just want to use a lot of common sense, and I see problems, and I talk about them, and I talk with everybody, and make decisions. And thank you very much for having me here tonight. And I want to thank WCDO and the Daily Star for having us all, so this is a great forum, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up, Gregory McCann.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for all showing up, Mr. Sam Pollock, CDO, and all you for venturing out in the weather tonight. My name is Gregory P. McCann, Jr. Most of the Sydney residents know me as Greggy, because my father was the original Greg. We've been up here our whole lives. I was raised in the city, which some people think is a downside, but I got a lot of training down there. We used to go to Sydney Centre when I was a kid and my father was a kid. My father worked for some of the local farmers, Millard Finch, and most of us, the old timers, know my father because he worked with them. During my career as a police officer, I went to first grade detective, and I was trained in a lot of different areas. One of the things I was trained in is community policing, when they first started that, and where I worked it for three years, to bring the community together, and how to learn from different aspects. And as a representative of Sydney, I do not have a personal agenda. I was asked by most of the residents, some prominent residents and business owners in the community, to run in this election. I retired fully three years ago, and now I'm set to go back to work and work for everybody in the village of Sydney and the town of Sydney, outside the village. There's a lot of things with the board meetings now, a lot of people do not get along, and it seems like Sydney became stagnant. There's a lot of things going on in Albany County. They're going to build a new convention centre up there, or they're getting all these grants from the government. We have to have people going to Albany, fighting for our grant money, and all the other things that are going on. And it just seems that we're fighting in-house between ourselves. And I just want all the people to get together and all work for each other. And I just want to thank everybody again for coming out. I will try to represent you the best way I can, and if anybody has any questions, I will meet anybody. I met a few of the people, I'll meet outside afterwards or tomorrow. They have my phone numbers, I have flyers. Thank you all, and thank you everybody for working.
Next is Bill Heath.
How are you doing tonight? Thank you, Mr. Pollock, thank you, CDO, for being here. Thank you, everybody, for showing up. I was actually born here in Sydney, grew up out of the area, returned about 27 years ago to start a career at then Keith Park, now Echo. Over my 27 years there, I think I've accumulated a lot of business experience. The last 10 years, I've been secretary for the Delaware Valley Humane Society. I think I've gained a lot of experience there that will help me on the Town Board if elected. And I'd like to see a lot more transparency as far as what's going on with the board. I think people need to know some of the things that are going behind, going on behind closed doors. I think that's got to be opened up. People need to have a voice, and they need to be heard. So hopefully, if elected, I can help that happen. Thank you.
Okay, our first, all of these questions come from you. Our first question is, what do you believe is the most important and/or significant issue facing the town of Sydney? And we'll start with Tobias Whitaker.
Well, I would have to say that, you know, it would be jobs. Jobs would be the most significant issue facing Sydney currently. The catch is, is what sort of industry do we want in Sydney? What sort of industry do we want to bring in long-term in our community? You know, obviously Amphenol employs a significant number of people in the area, and it's extremely important that they stay in the area. What I would like to see is the area take a turn towards sustainable energy. Personally, from my perspective, I think that it's the cart before the horse. We need to go with solar and wind, maybe biofuel, and then have a discussion on natural gas to follow that. It seems that we're doing things backwards, and in order to keep these businesses in the area, we need to think long-term on that. Thank you.
Jean Pickford.
I made reference early, a minute ago, to the Comprehensive Plan that Sydney had 10 years ago. It's my contention that if that plan were updated, and we had a careful look at it, we would have a context to address virtually every other issue, both in the village and in the township, and in the hamlet of Sydney and the other areas. There's not one issue that we are talking about today that was not mentioned in that plan 10 years ago. Ironically, some of the things we are still discussing now were mentioned 10 years ago. Some of them underscored with urgency that this is something that needs to happen sooner, rather than later. So my first priority would be to very quickly revisit that, and let that be our total context for decision-making.
John Schaefer.
I agree that jobs is a big issue, and the, that we don't chase away industry that may come, just leave it open that people can come and go. One of the issues we brought up was the natural gas, and I think the Environmental Protection Agency has that role to decide if natural gas will come to the area in the way of the fracking and that. And I'm certainly no expert on that, and I wouldn't think anybody on the board is an expert, or would think they were an expert, unless they have a degree in environmental engineering. The biggest issue beyond that is the hospital. Bassett, their lease is going to be up for renewal, and I don't want to see us get in the same situation we were years ago, where the town kind of may give away the store in the future, and end up funding Bassett being here. I think a competitive outlook for the hospital, in leasing to them, making sure that Sydney stays afloat and doesn't end up budgeting for the hospital. Let Bassett take care of the hospital, and Sydney take care of Sydney. Thank you.
Gregory McCann.
Jobs is the most important thing to keep the economy flowing, but we need to bring in jobs that pay higher scales than minimum wage or $10 an hour. And we got to look into these companies, these high-tech companies. They just showed two on the news tonight, these electronic companies coming in. We got to start venturing out and offering them some kind of deals to get these higher-paying jobs that come in, because the Sydney youth, most of the kids that I grew up, that I know from Sydney, moved out to other states to find better-paying jobs. And if you look around, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of jobs that these guys can go do, they need to be trained. And if we do have companies coming in, then we can set up a training program right away to train the youths, 17, 18, 19, or when they come home from the army, the Marines, the Navy Air Force. We need to start training our youths, the youths a little earlier, to get them so they can start building here, and we have the people staying here, instead of leaving and coming back when they retire. Thank you.
Bill Heath.
Well, I think I agree with everybody else that jobs are the, one of the most important issues for this town. I think how we get those jobs here is a larger issue, with where the economy is, and we've brought up natural gas. And I think that the issue about the natural gas, bringing jobs to this area, is one of the things that's tearing people apart here. We've got people on either side that, our neighbors, family, that are at each other's throat because of that issue. And I think we need to really look at what, you know, what type of jobs we need to bring here. Again, technology, I think, is a good way, alternative energy is another way. So I think there are alternatives to the natural gas, so, thank you.
Would anyone like to respond to something anyone else said, or we can go on to the next question? We'll go on. What changes would you endorse or propose to inform and allow access to meetings and decisions of the Town Board? And we're going to begin this time with Jean Pickford.
I think most of the Town Board meetings are open, anybody can attend. The attendance does vary between, well, sometimes as low as 12, all the way up to a couple of hundred on different occasions, but they are open meetings. I think it would be enhanced if, when discussions are made in executive session, if there could be a fuller report following those sessions back to the board. That is a stipulation in the Town Manual that the state of New York has developed for Town Boards, and I think that would be helpful. One of the other thoughts early on 10 years ago was that the Town Board have a quarterly newsletter, with they, that they circulate both issues to be anticipated, issues to be discussed, and follow-up issues that have already been handled, and I think that would be a valuable resource for everybody in the community.
John Schaefer.
I think it would be a big help to allow a specific amount of time for the community to speak at Town Board meetings, so there's no question, there's no interruptions, and there's a designated time, a certain length of time, to allow people from the community to speak. I think that would go a long way to helping along the meetings. Currently, we have a supervisor who is in charge of running the meetings. So as a councilman, you may not have very much say, but we can certainly encourage the supervisor to do so.
Gregory McCann.
Regarding the Town Board meetings, a few of you have seen me at the last year or so meetings. We, it's open to the public, but, but I, instead of just having the Town Board meeting monthly to run the town, as, because it has to be run the town, business has to be taken care of, we have to take care of something, same with the Village Board meetings. We should have, start having village and town hall meetings, where everybody can come out, and we have representatives from everybody, so we can say what we need to be done. If somebody has a problem with something, we come, and then we decide at the town hall meetings, where everybody is present, every entity in the town and the village of Sydney, and we go, and then at the Town Board meetings, we can address the issue right away, instead of having people argue all through the meetings, and nothing gets accomplished, and then we start again. So Town Board meetings are open to the public, which will make it better, fast-moving things, if we have village, like a village hall meeting, town hall meeting, all together. Have the village present, the town present, a police department member present, a fire department member present. They're not paid, so we can't force them, but I know somebody would come from the fire department.
Bill Heath.
And as everyone said, the board meetings are open to the public, they are, the public is not allowed to speak at the meetings. I do think we need a period of time, somewhere during that meeting, that the public can comment on either what's going on in the meeting, or prior to the meeting, they can bring up issues that should be discussed, indeed. So, yeah, open, open public speaking time would be the way to go.
Tobias Whitaker.
I would agree also that it comes down to communication. The last couple of board meetings, specifically, there hasn't been an open floor for the people in attendance to express their concerns. The meeting's just wrapped up, and everybody kind of moves on their way. And going back to communication, I think that when somebody in the voting public approaches the board, it's because they have a concern. They have a crisis that they're facing, and that's why they're there. And so the board needs to take a step back, and treat them like an individual, instead of belittling them, and being condescending, and cutting them off before they have an opportunity to express their grievances. Thank you.
Any rebuttal, any comments? Okay, we'll go on. Where do you stand on taking private land by eminent domain for the Constitution Pipeline? And we will begin with John Schaefer.
I think eminent domain is required, because that's how our country has come to grow so big and be competitive worldwide. When you have a pipeline coming from the south going to the north, I think it has to be open to the public to make the comments, like they are doing in having hearings. You know, there's a, to me, the argument is, is a direct route, going through less property better affect less people versus the alternate route, or I-88, which may actually encompass more properties, because they go around differently than a direct route. So eminent domain, I'm not against it, because if weren't for eminent domain, we wouldn't have I-88 through here, we wouldn't have a lot of things in this country that we need. But certainly, the public has to have the right to put in their two cents as to what's the best route for the community, and go from there.
Gregory McCann.
I'm not for eminent domain, but as America to move forward, sometimes some people's lives do get interrupted. It's not about one person, or one family, or one piece of property. It's about all of us. We'll never survive as a town if we can't get along. And if the pipeline's going to go through, if only one person doesn't want it, then, I'm against it, but somebody's going to have to do so. If the majority of people want it, this country was built on the majority, what everybody wants, not what one group, or the loudest yelling group, or one rich person wants. It's about what every person has, and every person has a vote. So with the pipeline going through, we didn't have a say on it, the government will kind of force it, and now, but it's going to go through, let's use what we can to get back stuff to help our community. And I don't want to see anybody's property taken from it, but I can't just put one person ahead of the whole community. We have to move forward and get into the 22nd and 21st century.
Bill Heath.
I believe that there is a purpose for eminent domain, but using it for the Constitution Pipeline is not one of them. When 88 went through, they did use eminent domain to put the highway through connecting Binghamton with Albany. There was a purpose for that. To give our land to a private company, I do not believe that's a good use of eminent domain. I don't think there's, they've shown the need for that pipeline to go through here to be able to take our properties.
Tobias Whitaker.
I can be short and sweet on this. I'm not for eminent domain on any level. And the irony is, this is the liberal saying this to you. I mean, is there anything more invasive than having the government step in and saying that we're going to take your property for profits, for corporate profits? That's what this boils down to. And I would have to say respectfully, that I think it's more than one person who would be against it. So when you have a large group of people who don't want their property taken, for business owners to make money off of their property, their personal belongings, that's wrong. It's not something that I believe in whatsoever.
Jean Pickford.
I believe the rights of all property owners should be respected. There are many people that are for the pipeline coming through, and they would welcome it. There are other people that are strongly opposed to it. I think the pipeline, like any other business, has the responsibility to negotiate in an effective way with everybody involved, but the final word should be, if a person is totally opposed to it, then there ought to be an alternative solution, or there ought to be some negotiation where that property owner is adequately compensated. And I suspect under the proceedings of eminent domain, the property owner winds up the substandard offer that is not in keeping with the true value of the property.
Okay, do we have any rebuttals, any comments? What cost-saving proposals would you wish to investigate? Merging a village and town, elimination of permanent legal counsel, privatizing the hospital building? And we will begin this with Gregory McCann.
To look in, first with the hospital. I do not have records or the books of the hospital. Some people have information, because they sit on the meetings at the board now, and they have more information on that, so I have to look into the books. The only thing that scares me with the hospital is only on the, it was sued for over $100 million, and they just lost the lawsuit. So I don't think the town of Sydney could hold off to a lawsuit with that, because none of us would be here anymore, because we wouldn't be able to afford to pay $100 million. Now, to go back to merge the village and the town, it is so busy out there right now. I don't know if you go down to the courts, you have court dates with town and the village, and the line's out the door some days. So everybody says that's a good cost-effective budget, but it won't be cost-effective, because it's never going to get done, and the court case will be put over. And then, we already have a beautiful facility in the village. Why would we want to bring it and move it somewhere else? And we have to build it. Everything has to be federally guidelines to build a court and a jail cell and that. And if you're going to merge it, then we're going to lose the Sydney Village PD.
Bill Heath.
As far as the hospital for cost savings, I don't believe we should be landlords. I believe that currently with Bassett and Amphenol being in the hospital, yes, they're showing a profit, but once Amphenol leaves, we're not going to see that. I do believe that we should actually sell that building before that happens, so that would be a savings in the long run for us. As far as other issues, as far as cost savings, I'd have to really take a good look at the budget to see where we could really do any kind of cost savings, so. Till I do that, I don't think I can really comment on other things, so.
Tobias Whitaker.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can get too specific on a lot of the answers. It obviously makes sense to have an attorney, that would be for the benefit of everybody. As far as the hospital goes, you know, as Bill had mentioned, we are in a situation where right now there is a profit. The problem is, is that we're relying on Amphenol coming in after natural disasters to take place, we need permanent tenants in there. And so it would make more sense for us to get out of the landlord business. I don't think that that's necessarily something that the town of Sydney has to directly be involved in, even though it's obviously a very good thing that Bassett is in our community.
Jean Pickford.
I think that's a hard question to respond to, at least in part, because I don't think any of us really have definitive information on the totality of the town's resources, budgets, how they interface. And so to prioritize which of those options would be the most cost-effective, I think that's the kind of information we would need to deliberate on before we can make a specific recommendation. I think prior to that question, we did have, we need to have, as a town, full fiscal information on the present status of all aspects of that budget.
John Schaefer.
I think this would be the best opportunity to unload the hospital property. There's a big difference between a hospital and a property. The town owns the property, the hospital leases the property. Right now-- hospital leases the property. Right now is the time, like the young man said, we're making a profit, we're doing well. We should unleash, you know, get rid of the hospital property at this point and make it privatized. The town government shouldn't be in the hospital business. I can just see the writing on the wall four, six, seven years from now when Amphenol is gone and Basset maybe might be struggling and say, hey, can the town help out? And we're back into the same cycle we were previously with the hospital. And I think that should be a priority at this time. While we're doing good there, it's more lucrative to sell at this point.
Okay. Would anyone like to comment or expand on your remarks? Yes, sir. Mr. McCann.
There's, when you move into a town, they want to see a hospital. So, I agree, we should sell the property. It's a big risk having a hospital. But we have to do something in the structure to keep it a hospital for the town and the village people. We can't just sell the hospital because they could turn it into whatever they wanted to. Because I, no other companies tried buying the building from the town in the past, but the thing was, we always wanted a hospital in the town of Sydney. The closest hospital would be only on to that. That's all I got to say. I understand it's a risk.
Anyone else? Okay. Would you work and try to keep the East Sydney Park open or close it? And we will begin with Bill Heath.
That's a tough question. Again, I'm not sure that the town belongs in the park business, but that, that is a property that has always been with the town since its inception. And I know that it has been a moneymaker at times. I don't know that this year was one of those. I just, I think it takes a lot of our resources to run that and to keep it a viable, viable business. So, I would say I would not be in that business. So...
Tobias Whitaker.
I would have to agree with you there, Bill. I don't think that I would be involved in the business either. It simply goes back to being a landlord in this position. And I know this year was supposed to be a good year with the weather, and it turned out that the dam didn't actually make the money that it was supposed to make this year. So, you know, it's nice to have it in the community, and it obviously brings tourism. But once again, is that a role that the town should be playing? I would personally step back on that.
Gene Pickford.
I would agree with Tobias for the most part. I think we would do well to channel our energies in other directions. Having said that, I think prior to disposing of it, we should explore what a scenario would look like, who would take it over, how would it be run, and would that scenario be a better one for the town than the present one? And I think prior to a final decision, that process should be investigated.
John Schaefer.
I guess I disagree with everybody on this point. East Sydney Dam is an asset to the community. It's property that the town gets to use for free thanks to the Army Corps of Engineers. You can't beat a deal like that. The money that we take in, it is spent on operating that facility. And it's a bargain for the community, a bargain for the residents, and to give it up, I think is just out of the question. I can see making an extra effort for management of East Sydney Dam to be by somebody outside the town government. But to take it out of the town's hands when it's just handed to the town like that and has been a resource for this community and recreation facility for so many years is out of the question.
Gregory McCann.
The town should definitely keep the property. One of the assets is what you own in life, your property. Everybody's saying about the pipeline coming through. That's one of the town's biggest properties, the East Sydney Dam. I grew up going to there. A lot of people stopped going there. They, we got to start advertising it more to get back. It's a beautiful area, and once you get rid of something, you can never get it back. We'll never get the dam back. And they said, well, it's, we don't have time, put our energy somewhere else. That's easy to be taken care of, the East Sydney Dam. And I don't understand that that's, I'm here to work for the people of Sydney, and I want the people to come out to the dam, and I will go there and work for them to bring the dam back, to make sure the bathrooms are okay and the town. We only had, they said something like 50-something percent occupancy last year. We got to advertise more, bring more people back.